Played the spy game and followed them. I said, where the hell are these guys going? Big trucks. Probably, probably twenty tons.
I can't believe they are, you know, they're getting started the way that they, you know, with the, with the current conditions out there, but they're moving right along.
Gene, what's up with Josh? You said he's having issues?
Says he's got an internet issue. We could probably get started.
Yeah, we can get through the, we can get through the openings. Um, when I started, Gene, do you want to start it, Gene?
No, go ahead.
Mark, uh, Mark, but we were gonna, I just had talked to Josh before. Uh, Diane is on, our town clerk is on, and um, was, I asked if we could take her first um, to go through the opening comments related to annual town elections. If you don't mind.
No problem. Okay, I'll open the um,
Yeah.
The Board of Selectmen um, meeting. Actually, this is gonna be a joint meeting too with the uh, Planning Board, right, Tony?
Yes.
Okay, so.
And Board, yeah, and Board of Health.
Uh, open the joint meeting of the um, Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, and um, the Planning Board. Um, we have from the big gene you're here, so it's February second.
I'll second it.
Okay, um.
King can't.
Uh, Mark, all right. Uh, Dan, do you want to all um, open it for the Planning Board?
Uh, sure, we can open, you want us to open now rather than later?
I think you have the, all the members there, you might as well just do it, right?
We have, well, we have a quorum. We don't have all the members, but we do have a quorum.
Okay.
Um, okay, uh, so I would like to call the Planning Board's portion of the joint meeting with the Selectmen uh, to order. Um, and uh, let me call the role of those who I see. Um, Cal?
Here.
Sheila?
Here.
Pat?
Here.
Uh, Shannon?
Here.
I believe Rob is absent, Rob. And I think uh, Steve is not with us. So we have uh, five votes in favor, meeting called to order, uh, Planning Board meeting called to order six thirty two P M.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dan. Uh, let's see.
Did you get that message from Josh? He, he wants the um.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to send him a, a number that he can just uh, press off from his phone.
Okay, we're gonna start with the town clerk, um, to go over the annual town election information. Diane? Diane, you here? I see you there, you're on mute.
Do you want to let Debbie go and then let Diane follow her up?
Hold on one second, Gene, she's almost done.
Oh, okay.
There she goes. Diane, you're muted, so unmute yourself, you can go. Diane? Okay. You need to unmute yourself, Diane. Okay, Deb, Deb? You wanna start with the uh, COVID update?
Sure. Um, well, I think I have good news for everybody. I think we have turned the corner. We ended up with um, in January, an all time high of one hundred and fifty seven cases. Compared to last January, we had sixty three. So by a long shot, this January was the highest month we've had um, since COVID began last March. Um, so anyway, one hundred and fifty seven for February so far. We've had, we had two days, January thirty first and February first, where we had no new cases and we were celebrating. Today, we did get one new case. But still, we were getting, you know, ten to fifteen cases a day. Looking back at last February, we only had twelve cases. So let's see if we follow uh, that trend this year. The testing uh, statistics came in tonight and from, let's see. Dates from January sixteenth to January twenty ninth, we had four hundred and eighty three residents tested and sixty three were positive. So you can, if you remember, when, before, we were up to a hundred, then we came down to eighty two. Now we're down to sixty three. So I'm um, I'm sure in the next uh, reporting period, we'll have much lower numbers. Um, the school right now has had two weeks of pool testing with no positive cases. So that's great news. And um, the Jasmine Nursing Center right now has no positive cases. They did have a total in that uh, recent cluster of thirty three cases. So we had sixteen staff and seventeen patients. Um, who, of course, we did have one death and the rest of the cases have recovered. So um, so that's, you know, that's, I'm taking that as great news on numbers and uh, I did today order our flu vaccine for next year. And we have increased um, our order for the high dose vaccines from one ten to one thirty because of the uh, I think because of the demand that we had last year, we did use every single dose. So um, we're just anticipating that we um, could use a few more. So um, so that's it. That's it on the uh, on the COVID and the flu front. Um, Tony, you might wanna, I don't know if you wanna show the um, updated vaccine data that's on the website?
Yeah. Share my screen. Can you see that, Deb?
Yep, I can see it. So this shows the um, the number, the percentage of uh, people that we have boosted uh, according to age group. So what, what was not added, um, so the five to eleven age group, of course, they're not eligible for boosters because they've just been eligible uh, to receive the vaccine. And out of the one hundred and sixty six residents that we have in that age group, um, we have a hundred and three of them have received their first dose and ninety six of them are fully boosted, I'm sorry, fully vaccinated with the second dose. So ninety six out of a hundred and sixty six right now. So I think um, I think that's great. We continue to have our clinics two days a week at Lynn City Hall. Um, we continue to see the hot people showing up at those clinics. And um, I think we're, you know, trending in the, in the right direction for our young kids. Now, you've probably heard today that Pfizer has also uh, approved the emergency use for even younger children. Um, and I'm hoping that that age group will uh, be getting their vaccines at the pediatrician's office in a more controlled environment. So um, we'll see about that, more to come on that.
Well, thanks for um, some good news, Deb.
My pleasure.
Hey, Tony, we still have those uh, testing kits coming?
Yes, I actually was gonna uh, say that. I, I'm staring at, you know, a ton of boxes in, in my office.
Yeah.
Uh, these are them. So we got our first shipment of uh, at home test kits. There's two tests in every box. And um, we have enough to provide two boxes to every resident. Um, likely, what we'll do here is uh, we only received about half, so we'll, we'll distribute, you know, one box to every resident A S A P and then distribute the second box probably like in a month or so when the next shipment comes in. So um, I do need help though with the distribution of these. Uh, so I will be posting uh, on Facebook or doing a call or, or some, somewhat, looking for some volunteers to help with um, the distribution, which will, you know, feature um, a couple of uh, you know, five to seven P M. drive through option. And then also having them here in the town hall during normal business hours for pickup. Um, and like I said, we have uh, we, we have enough for, you know, in this first round, we'll do a box per resident, we'll have a master list. So if um, uh, a master resident list, so if, if you were to, you know, come to the town hall and, you know, we know you have four members in your household, we'll give you the four boxes and check them off on the list. And we're also gonna put together a, a little one page sheet to go with these boxes that kinda explains um, you know, when you should use them and, and um, and that, and have some other resources and information available. So um, hopefully next week.
Excellent.
All right. Well, um, first of all, sorry to be late, had a internet issue here, but uh, back as you can see. So are we officially in session? Yeah, Mr. Green and um, Diane is on now, but she's muted. Uh, she wanted to, wanna take her out of order. Yep, okay. You're still muted, Deb. Is anybody a lip reader?
Ask the unmute.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yay. Um, sorry about that. My laptop said the microphone's broken, so I had to go on my phone. Um, do you want me to just jump right in?
Please.
Okay. So just as an update, the annual town elections are April thirtieth this year. The nomination packets that you have to fill out are all in my office, complete, ready for pickup. There are several uh, offices available for uh, election. There's one for seat for Board of Selectmen, one for moderator, one for town clerk, two seats in the assessors, one for a three year term, one seat to fill an unexpired term of two years, one seat for constable, one seat for a term of three is for a library trustee. On the school committee, we have one seat for three years and one seat available up for election for an unexpired term of one year. On the Planning Board, there are two seats available for five year terms. And um, those are all the offices that you could run for this year. Nomination, excuse me, nomination papers, as I said, are available now in my office. They must be submitted back to the town clerk by Wednesday, March ninth, with at least twenty five signatures on them. If you're gonna run for election, and I can explain this to you if you come in, I recommend that you get at least thirty, cause some people sign it and they're not actually registered voters in the town. Once you submit your papers on March ninth, if you have uh, almost three weeks to decide to withdraw, if you decide not to run, that day is Wednesday, March thirtieth. And then we have finance reports due the eight days before, which would be the twenty second. And the last day to register to vote during um, for town elections is Friday, April eighth. So that's all.
Hey, Tony, I know it's early, I know it's early, but are, are you intending on doing the uh, town meeting and the elections outside again?
Elec- uh, elections will be indoors, uh, will be here in the town hall, but um, you know, the, it's early, but I, I'm leaning towards yes, being outside again this spring. You know, it's, 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 it's possible that COVID numbers and guidelines will be relaxed come May twenty first. But we have to make a decision on that, you know, by March. So, you know, I think, you know, it'd rather be uh, safe than sorry, you know, it's, we're, we're likely gonna be outside again, but I haven't completely you know, decided on that yet.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, Diane, anything else?
Um, no.
For joining.
I was gonna ask if you're gonna run, Josh, but I don't think I can, so I won't.
All right. Well, you'll be the first one to know, um, Diane.
There you go.
Um, okay, thanks Diane for all that information.
Okay. You're welcome. I'm gonna sign off, cause I'm at a convention, but thank you. You all sat with me?
Yes, thank you, Diane.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right, so we have some opening comments. Uh, the winter parking ban is in effect, March, until March twentieth, twenty twenty two, all vehicles must be parked off the street from twelve A M., midnight to six A M. The H A T D P W is seeking snowplow drivers, contact Mary Lowe at M Lowe at the hot dot org or seven eight one five eight one zero zero two six for, for more information. Drivers must have their own vehicle. Council on Aging Board, uh, you can see, uh, open, the Council on Aging. Uh, visit the hot dot org for full description of board mission and duties. Send letters of interest to K Taylor at the hot dot org. Um, also, there is a part time job opening, Assistant to the Executive Director of the Council on Aging. If interested, visit the Employment Opportunities page at the hot dot org for job description. Send cover letter and resume to K Taylor at the hot dot org or drop off or mail to Town Hall by February eighteenth, twenty twenty. Um, Diane has already read um, all the election information. Uh, Gene or Mark, do you have any additional opening comments?
No, um, I'm sure um, Tony's gonna address the uh, the stellar job that all the hot employees um, did on the snowstorm, but uh, it was, it was a great job. He's got a, he's got a great team behind him.
Yeah. Gene, do you have anything else to add?
That's probably our robo call going out. Um, we have, so tonight on the hot road, in between Spring Road and High Street, well, the D P W will be working overnight to remove um, a lot of the snow in that area. So we put a robo call out, letting people know, you know, ask them not to park on the road in that area. Um, expect some overnight work happening, but there's a lot of snow. They worked pretty hard today cleaning up some sidewalks in key areas, like in front of the town hall, library and um, Richdale and the post office. And then, you know, tonight, it was just too much with the, you know, car traffic to do it during the day. So uh, they'll be doing, making a big effort on the hot road uh, overnight.
All right, um, I don't have anything, um, any additional opening comments. On the agenda item, uh, on the agenda is a vote to approve um, the award for Town Hall and Library envelope restoration. Uh, but that, um, we're gonna postpone that to the next meeting. So therefore, um, the next item on the agenda is to approve the Board of Selectmen, Selectmen Meeting Minutes. Uh, do we have a motion there?
Uh, I, I, I got a question. I wasn't, I wasn't available for the December fifteenth, so I don't know if you wanna split that up or just, and I'll abstain.
I'll move that the hot Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes for December third, first two thousand twenty one.
Seconded, seconded.
Any discussion? Um, okay, roll call vote.
Gene can't, the eye.
I call it a lie.
Pushing for my.
I move that the hot Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes from December fifteenth, two thousand twenty one.
Uh, I'll second that one. And Gene, you, you're gonna abstain, um, since you went there?
Yeah.
So uh, roll call vote.
I call it a lie.
As am I. Um, the next item on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Planning Board uh, to talk about a letter the Planning Board sent to the Board of Selectmen uh, with regard to uh, Army Corps of Engineering study. Um, so is the Planning Board in session?
Yeah, we are, Josh.
Great, so um, um, maybe, Dan, do you wanna um, sort of have a few words of introduction?
Sure.
Topic?
Sure. Um, what this is, this is about um, uh, the opportunity uh, to have a study done that uh, the Planning Board has been thinking about for, for a while. Um, and this is an opportunity to have the Army Corps of Engineer, Engineers uh, perform this study, which would be uh, they have an excellent reputation for, for the quality and comprehensiveness of their work, and it wouldn't cost us anything because there is an unusual grant opportunity uh, under their rules. For, it's a, it's for aquatic ecosystem restoration projects. And the requirements are, there has to be an aquatic ecosystem, number one. Number two, that has been altered by quote man's hands, close quote. Number three, that used to be the home of an indentured, of an endangered species. Uh, and number four, uh, which if restored, could again uh, allow that endangered species to um, uh, accommodate itself, establish, reestablish itself. Um, and we, we do have a spring fed ecosystem uh, at Bear Pond uh, that used to run to Doggy Beach, that was the home of the endangered American eel. Um, and uh, the Army Corps of Engineers um, apparently would be, if we asked them to, would be happy to come in and, and study how to restore that aquatic ecosystem. Um, uh, they would uh, they would study the uh, the area. Um, uh, and they would look and see uh, what, what was done and what the situation is now. Um, and they could uh, design a um, uh, a, a home for the American eel in Bear Pond while mitigating flooding and protecting residents and providing an aesthetically pleasing and healthy recreation era, air, area for the town. So they would provide a hundred thousand dollars to do this study. Um, it is uh, highly likely that that would be sufficient, uh, especially in view of the topographical study that uh, that has already been done for the town. So that would save them a lot of work on the front end. Um, and uh, they could do the study for us, if there, they would make recommendations for what uh, could or should be done. Um, if we wanted to proceed, uh, there would be a cost sharing that we would have to participate in. We would, we would be responsible for thirty five percent of the cost, uh, the Army Corps for the other sixty five percent. Um, but our thirty five percent could be a payment in kind such as the use of the land uh, or work that could be performed um, by uh, uh, our own D P W. Uh, so there wouldn't necessarily be any budgetary impact, even if we do decide to proceed to the project. Um, and that would, of course, depending on what uh, what the, we, the town, uh, the Selectmen in particular, and possibly town meeting, uh, think of the study that the Army Corps of Engineers would provide for us. So this is, is not necessarily uh, connected with uh, previous thoughts uh, about um, the lowlands. This really is a separate project. Um, and uh, whatever the Army Corps comes up with, that they would uh, take into consideration uh, what the flooding situation has been there and what the town is doing about it. So, so that's really not uh, in the foreground, in the forefront of this project. Um, but this would be, it, it would be free money, it would be quality work, um, and would let us uh, have an opportunity to see whether it would be feasible to restore Bear Pond to um, a uh, a, a um, just, and as they say, aesthetically pleasing um, uh, aquatic ecosystem rather than the uh, the, the kind of cesspool that it is now. Uh, so we're recommending that uh, that the town uh, proceed with this. Um, it would be the Selectmen uh, either directly or via the town administrator who would write the letter um, applying to this grant. Uh, we have provided a sample for how the letter would work. Uh, and we'd be happy to uh, work with the uh, the Selectmen or, and or the town administrator on the putting the letter together, if that's what uh, the three of you decide you wanna do.
Uh, all right. Well, first of all, um, thanks for sending the letter over and uh, uh, and in particular, I know uh, Shannon Bianchi has put a tremendous amount of effort into this uh, this endeavor, so uh, thanks for that. Um, obviously flooding, control of flooding is a huge topic in the town in the heart and um, this, although that might not be the primary purpose, it certainly would tie into that. Uh, we do have a hundred thousand dollars was funded at the last annual town meeting to, to look at options related to flood control and management of the, of the lowlands, Ford Road, Foxville Road area. Um, so it, one way or another, although it's not the same project, it certainly would dovetail in some fashion or another. Um, and I haven't understa- I understand that the Army Corps of Engineers has a number of programs. So anyway, any help we can get in that, towards the control of flooding certainly is of great interest to us. Um, and I see we have Kristen Cantus, the Chair of our Conservation Commission uh, online, uh, who might have some input about um, the Army Corps and um, this program and other programs, but um, you know, certainly, we don't wanna leave any opportunities unattended, so uh, let's see what Kristen has to say compared to Kristen.
Gosh, um, so I actually called the Program Manager for this program today because I didn't know a lot about it, and I spent about forty five minutes with her on the phone talking about it. Um, it's an interesting program. I think we need to decide if we, if we're looking at fixing a flooding problem or restoring an ecosystem that may also fix the flooding problem. Um, you know, it's, it's a, it's a neat program and I'm all for um, ecological restoration. My primary concern is, the way it works is, we would send a letter. They would decide if they were interested or not. They would send the Program Manager out to take a look. She would kinda take a look, meet with people. And then she would recommend it or not. Then they would send a larger group out of engineers and scientists, and then they would take a look. And then they would decide if it would continue further. And then they would do an environmental assessment. She said that on average, environmental assessments take eighteen to thirty six months. So we'd be looking at a year and a half to three years before they would produce a report from which we could make a decision about what we wanted to do. So conservatively, say, on the, on the long end, we're looking at three years before we would be taking any action to fix the flooding if we took this route. I think it would be neat if we could restore the ecosystem. I see some challenges um, from an environmental perspective, like a, a lack of direct access to the ocean um, between the lowlands in there. Um, but the Army Corps does have other programs that might be a better fit for what we're looking at. Um, section two oh five is flood damage reduction. They have, it's, it works the same way. Um, I think has shorter timeframes. But it would be looking directly at flooding and, and fixing that issue. So I think the town needs to decide, or the Selectmen need to decide if we're willing to wait to get down the road and see if it works out for us, or if we wanna start making, taking some actions now that not, won't necessarily be supportive of habitat restoration. Those, those aren't necessarily two topics that dovetail. They can sometimes conflict.
Oh, um, the, I assume that there's no cost, and this is directed, this question's directed to anyone who might know the answer. No cost for getting the uh, the Program Manager here to take the first pass at this issue?
Correct.
Yeah, so why not? I guess is, is my point of view.
Exactly.
Let, let me just add, add something if I might, that uh, Let, let me just add, add something if I might, that uh, as, as Kristen said, section two oh six is, is not uh, is not about uh, flooding remediation uh, or, or um, or prevention. Um, it, it's about uh, aquatic ecosystems, so this, so the, the um, application we're talking about now would be about an aquatic ecosystem and um, uh, I think as time would go on, um, whoever is involved in that should keep in touch with what else is happening about the flooding, and, and certainly if there's another project, if section two oh five, uh, I'm not familiar with that one, if that one's about flooding, then we should investigate that too. I, I assume that these would be independent, although maybe we wouldn't be able to get two grants at the same time in the same small town, but we could uh, we could apply for them and, and decide which one we wanted to prioritize, I guess.
I mean, I'm, I'm thinking off the top of my head here, but um, aquatic habitat restoration sounds great, flooding mitigation sounds great. But I wanna make sure they don't conflict, right? Um, we don't wanna be, well, in my opinion, we don't wanna be pursuing a habitat uh, restoration that re- results in more flooding or uh, hinders efforts currently underway. Um, so that would be sort of my, my only caveat, but we can't know until we till we get the program manager here and, and see what the opportunities are.
Right, and it doesn't, it doesn't cost us anything, it doesn't commit us to anything.
Yeah.
To, to, to do this, to do the study. Um, and if it uh, if we don't learn anything from the study uh, in time to meld this into the ongoing work at uh, to, to alleviate the flooding problem, then we will have lost an opportunity to meld in something that we wouldn't otherwise be doing anyway, so there's really no loss there.
Yeah.
If I'm understanding this correctly.
Kristen, what did you sense from the project program manager, how long it might take to, to get them out here and get the first pass at this?
Um, it seems like it, once you submit the letter, she, she seemed to think that she would come out within a, you know, fairly short timeframe and kind of assess the situation, and then she makes a recommendation if it's a go or if it's not, if it's worth exploring at all or not.
And I, and I saw you versed enough in the other, the, the other programs to?
No, so that would be a different, it's a different program manager, so if we wanted to take that route, we would have to submit to the two se- two programs separately, they're two totally different things. I will say that they're not gonna let us explore both, I would be very surprised. I'm sure those two people work next to each other, and so, you know, it might be worth, if we're gonna take this route, it may be worth applying to both and see what happens. Um, and see if we get interest in either, you know, both the habitat restoration and our flooding mitigation work um, are using the same ecosystem, so we need to think about that as well, you know, the more we we can't continue to make changes to it if they're gonna be studying it. So it would be a decision to kind of put flood mitigation work on hold if the, if the study moved forward.
Kristen, I don't know if you're involved in it or you know about it, but Lynn is currently go- undergoing a um, flood hazard mitigation program, they're working it with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And in that, the numbers that they use, predictable sea rises by two thousand and twenty, it'll, the, the sea will rise, two thousand and thirty, I'm sorry, sea rise one point two feet. And then, and then one point two feet on top of that for almost the next forty years, so looking at it from some of the numbers that we were just talking about, even if we start now, we're protecting future generations out over the next ten, twenty, and fifty years.
Yeah, and the Army Corps would use those projections in their, in their work.
They do.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
And, and uh, I'm sorry, did I speak over something? I was just gonna ask Kristen, um, uh, permitting gets a bit easier for an Army Corps project, right, is that a true statement or?
I talked to her about that, and she said, they will give you all the data you need, but you have to do the permitting yourself. Cause I mean, that's the hard part, right, oftentimes it's complicated, we'd have to do NEPA, we'd have to do oh, it would be complicated, so I did ask her that specifically, and she said that if you get to the point where they do an environmental assessment, they end up providing you with like a three hundred page document that has everything you need to get the permitting, it'll have plans, it'll have a document, and then we would have to do the permitting to, then, to be able to move forward with construction.
Don't they take care of any federal permitting though, if there is any required?
Yep, they will do NEPA, but we have to do NEPA, which is state permitting.
Yeah.
But because it's federal funds, yes, they would do NEPA for us.
Okay. Uh, Mark, do you have any comments or thoughts?
Um, yeah, I do, I have a few, um, certainly I don't see any um, time in asking Army Corps, um, maybe to apply to both grant opportunities. Um, but I, I wanna make sure that we, we, we continue on with what the town meeting voted last year um, to hire an engineering firm to study the flooding issue. They appropriated a hundred thousand dollars, I know that Tony has put a scope together and is engaging an engineering firm to do that work, so uh, I'm all for um, um, applying for both of these um, uh, grant opportunities with the Army Corps, but I don't want to slow down or interrupt um, the ongoing work that town meeting has already approved.
Yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent, we cannot slow down that, the town voted to proceed with that, and we cannot interrupt that progress. Um, but in a, to that end, that's mostly, that's a study at this point, so there's no uh, backos going in the ground, you know, between now and the next town meeting, so. Um, but I certainly agree that we, we cannot put the current efforts on hold.
Where, where do we stand, where do we stand with those current efforts now?
There's a lot going on, um, you know, we have um, a lot of different grant applications that we're working on, and some are submitted. Uh, we have mosquito control coming in, I mean, since twenty eighteen, we've spent a lot of money towards improving the storm drainage in this area, and all of that is is focused on sending water, you know, first of all, preventing water from coming in. Um, and then with the de-watering effort, it's really focused on sending water towards Bear Pond. Um, and that's where, and that's pretty much where our efforts are going. So, I, I can go through a little bit more about like what, what we've been doing uh, since twenty eighteen, I guess I would ask, um, Dan, um, you had mentioned earlier in your explanation that this is a this effort is different from previous efforts of the planning board. And I know, you know, last year, uh, there was a CPC application for something similar. Um, and the biggest, you know, problem that I had with that was that, you know, the the underlying intent of that was to change the direction of the current system of the flow of water, uh, and send it from the golf course towards lowlands by restoring an outfall, an open, you know, outfall out to the ocean, is that, you know, is that is that different than what you're, what you're looking to explore?
Well, what, what I would say, Tony, is that um, the, the goal of the previous uh, proposal was as an alternative uh, method of flood control. Um, this, the goal of this project, um, specifically within the scope of uh, what the Army Corps of Engineers does, would do under section two oh six, is just to look at the aquatic restoration of the, of the pond. Um, not to be looking at it for the purpose of flood control, but looking at it for the purpose of restoring the species and restoring the pond. Um, and if the context of what they would be doing is trying to restore the pond while water is coming in their direction, in that direction for purposes of flood control, then that's something that they would have to take into account in their study. Um, it's possible that they'll tell us, we couldn't begin to restore the pond with all this water coming in for flood control, in that case, they won't do the study, or the study won't have any impact. Um, but uh, what we're proposing here to ask the Army Corps to do under section two oh six is not to alleviate flooding.
I think, you know, I just want-
Not specifying where the water would go.
Yeah, that's good, I mean, that was my concern, you know, when I attended the when I attended the planning board, were you, uh, the planning board voted to send us this, this letter, this request? Um, you know, the only comment I had, well, I had two comments, what was, go ahead and send the letter. And uh, the second comment was, I didn't wanna tell the Corps, come and study this, and this is what we want the outcome to be. Um, right, so I think we need to get the Corps in here, if we all agree, and have them tell us, you know, what they think it'll take, they're, they're the experts in them, so um, that's my view.
Yeah, and part of the starting point will be that there is flooding. Um, and there is a remediation plan. Um, and that's what's happening, and they should uh, study what we can do about it and preserve the pond, how to preserve the pond while that's happening.
So, I guess my question then would be, what is the ecological habitat that the planning board is seeking to restore?
The, the pond as the, the, the pond as a spring-fed ecosystem that can accommodate uh, fish, in particular, the uh, endangered American eel, which used to live there.
So this, but the pond is landlocked currently, right?
Yes.
So how would you uh, restore that unless it was to make it not landlocked?
Well, that's a question for them.
Kristen has her hand raised.
Um, to me, I think that's the challenge, right, like, we don't have a direct access to the ocean uh, that we own. And then, you know, so I, I, to me, that's the challenge that, I don't know, I mean, the Corps would have to figure out how to simultaneously provide a habitat restoration project while also accommodating flooding. And to me, I feel like those are conflicting uses, and that's my concern is that, you know, right now, we're prioritizing flooding, that is our major issue, it would be nice if we could restore the habitat, but flooding is our problem, so to, I'm concerned that those are conflicting issues, that's why I'm just not sure. In talking to her, she, she was excited about, you know, the eel, that's one of the things they prioritize. But um, I said, we don't have access to the water that's uninterrupted, and she said she was concerned that that would be an issue.
Oh, yeah, that, I mean, that could be, it, that, that could be um, uh, it, it could be that the result of their study, one result of their study would be that we could, we could do this grand plan, and we could, we could save the pond, and well, without uh, bothering the uh, the flooding uh, prevention efforts, um, if we could somehow acquire access to the ocean and um, they had some suggestions about how that could be done, and it would be up to us to decide as a town whether we would seek to uh, somehow acquire access to the ocean or not pursue the project, I, I think that's, that's not, a- as, as uh, w- was said, we don't wanna approach them telling them what the answer is gonna be, we wanna ask them how, how this could be done, or if it can be done. Feasibility study, you, you, the answer maybe we can't do it.
Are we, in a sense, using the eel to backdoor the flooding situation?
No, we're not, this isn't about the flooding situation, this is uh, this, this is, the flooding situation is paramount, and the town, town meeting has decided to deal with the flooding situation uh, in, in the way that it's being dealt with. Um, this is not, this is not a way to backdoor the proposal we had last year that was in large part about flooding. This is a different proposal, it's not seeking to uh, challenge the direction the town is taking in terms of flooding. Um, it's trying to say um, that aquatic restoration would be great, there is a grant available for the Army Corps of Engineers to see if they could come and do that. Um, the flooding situation is what it is, it's being addressed as it's being addressed, and that's part of their study is to figure out how, if they can save the pond in the context of, of where all this water is going.
Dan, I, I didn't, I didn't mean that in a derogatory sense, I, I was just looking for it as a creative way of of helping our situation out.
Right, then that's for them to figure out, yeah.
So I, I guess I just have to ask another question there, and, and excuse me for, you know, asking it in different ways, I just that, you know, this, the flooding effort um, the money, the time, you know, everything we've been doing, it's, it's, it's been, there's been a lot put into it, so I wanna be clear about what you're saying, Dan, because the, the, the letter that was sent to the selectman regarding a program at the Army Corps speaks directly about restoring an ecological habitat that was altered by man-made structures. And last year's CPC application was in regarding of, of similar, you know, maybe for a different purpose, but it was the same idea of restoring an old, you know, from the eighteen hundreds, the old river that went from Doggy Beach to Bear Pond, and changing the direction in the flow of that water, having open access to the ocean. And so, I, that directly conflicts with the efforts that we're making regarding flood mitigation, so I'm asking, how is that, how is this effort different from, from that effort?
Well, we're not telling the Army Corps to, to uh, reopen that water flow. We're asking the Army Corps how to save the pond, um, and if they tell us that we should acquire a right-of-way uh, to pump some water out, out to bathing beach, of course, uh, that may not be easy to do, but that may be what they say would need to be done. Um, and that's for them to, we're relying on them to figure it out, I mean, we um, uh, the, the town is, is on course to move floodwater in the direction of Bear Pond. Um, that doesn't necessarily mean that when it gets to that part of town, it needs to accumulate um, in Bear Pond without, without access anywhere else, I mean, I, I I would not presume that the water heading towards Bear Pond to alleviate flooding would be poisonous to the American eel. Maybe the Army Corps could figure that out. Um, but uh, I, I mean, we don't have the answers, we're asking the question, the question is, can you save Bear Pond? Um, and they'll come here and they'll, they'll see the situation, the situation will, will be what they'll learn about when they come to see the situation, is that we're dealing with flooding in that direction.
I mean, I, I think I would support one hundred percent what, what Tony has um, been talking about in terms of the directional flow, what Josh has mentioned. There is, there is, um, the only direct access to the ocean in this um, drainage system is at Bear Pond. There's a thirty-six inch drainage pipe that goes from Bear Pond to Doggy Beach. Um, and that's the only access to the ocean that we currently have.
Is that the clapper well?
No.
But that's not, that's closed, right?
Um, that, well, there's both the clapper va- valves, structure that's there, and there's a thirty-six inch drainage outlet that's there, that's gravity-fed. Um, that, that has been cleaned a number of times, and there were eels in there, um, when we cleaned it. Um, but there is no, I mean, I, I mean, I think what you'll, what you'll see um, when we finish our engineering reports, is exactly what Tony is saying, that the directional flow is going to Bear Pond. Um, and in terms of trying to mitigate our flooding issues. And the only access to the ocean that I know of right now is from Bear Pond to Dorothy Beach.
Bear, Bear Pond to Dorothy Beach, right?
Yeah. Yeah. The, part of the problem you have now is there is no flow, the water is totally stagnant.
Well, that's not true, there is flow, there is flow now, it's, it's, it can be improved, and we're working on it, but it, it a hundred percent flows to Bear Pond. You know, there, when the water level, the water level is low, when the water level in the, in the ditch system is at a certain level, it's less, it doesn't flow as much because the culverts need to be adjusted. So they create kind of like a, a stagnant area in between culverts, because the the passage between that covert is higher than the base of the ditch. Um, plus you have a number of spots in the ditch system that have been filled in and overgrown um, due to lack of maintenance and storms, so that's what we are, you know, working to improve. Um, but I, I don't, you know, I, I'm, I like the idea of bringing the Army Corps in, working in consultation with the engineer that we've uh, been working with, funded through last year's uh, town meeting vote. But I, I would do it in a way that's not for that specific program. Cause I just don't see how that specific program wouldn't contradict with the efforts that the town has been making.
Well, let's find out. Well, let's find out. Let's, I mean, let's, um.
Let's ask them.
Let's ask, ask them to come out, um, with the agreement amongst ourselves that in no way can we. Stop or slow down the currently funded by town meeting, uh, efforts. Uh, but let's see what we can learn.
If we do that, can we also submit a letter to the section two oh five for the flood reduction? Because I think that that's a more realistic route for us.
I agree.
Because doing, putting, I mean, if we're gonna do it, let's go to both. It's two different programs. If they say no to both of us, that's great. If they say yes to one. I mean, I, I feel like. The Ameri- the eel, the habitat restoration, I think is a dead end. I think it's antithetical to its opposite of what we're doing. I mean, so I'm, I'm concerned that it's gonna be a quick dead end.
Can I just address, address that? Cause I, I think we're not saying that. The outflow or the flow can't go from Bear Pond right to the, the beach across the parking lot right there. I mean, I don't. That's certainly one possibility and that's, I believe town owned property, right?
I think the problem is fish don't typically want to travel in pipes that are dark for long distances. That is not.
But that, but that could be part of the solution, right? Is, is open airing a, a ditch with some sort of short, shorter. Culvert, you know, that, that, that's, I think we don't want to. Solution this right now, but I think that's certainly within the realm of possibility that. The outflow is right there, you know, that, that in, I think. It was just said there were eels in there, uh, when it was cleaned out, so.
No, that, that's that bear pond.
That's what I'm saying.
That's not the side that would be coming out.
I think that's what we're, we're exactly what we're saying.
I'm sorry, Pat, when you said across from the parking lot, you're talking about Willow Road parking lot?
Exactly. I mean, that's, that might be what the Army Corps says is the best solution to restoring. So, you know, the ecosystem, it's not necessarily that there needs to be a secondary. Outflow from the Lowland side, although I think that might be a benefit in the future too. We saw in twenty eighteen, the, the flooding wanted to. It didn't have an outlet, um, on that side. So, um, you know, it could be that. They come back and say, hey, there, there's an opportunity for a second, um, secondary outflow there, but. Um, you know, I don't think this, what you're saying is. It is, you know, we, we're not saying that it has to go, we have to reverse the, the flow that's been established. Um, you know, I think the Army Corps will look at this and see what's practical. That's what they do. Their engineer is not, uh. Um, you know, that they're not.
So I guess I get my, just to explain my confusion then is that. You know, the, it's talking about restoring an ecological habitat that existed and no longer does. Because of a manmade structure, um. The, there was never, uh, you know, unless I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong. The, the ecological system that was altered is the other side. You know, it's not the Bear Pond side. The Bear Pond side, um, never had open flow from. You know, that, that beach into the golf course. Um, it wasn't, there wasn't an open flow there. So. When, when you're asking a program that's designed to restore habitat that was altered by man, the only thing that I'm seeing here. Is Doggy Beach.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's correct. I don't think that's correct. I mean, if you look at the historical maps and photographs, there was. Essentially a barrier beach right there in front of Bear Pond and I'm sure it was shaped by storms and, and whatnot over the years. So. I, I have no doubt there was some flow of water, uh, over that beach into Bear Pond back and forth probably. You know, changing like all any other sandy barrier beach over time. Uh, you know, I don't think there's. There's anything to say that, you know, an appropriate restoration, as long as it. Accomplishes the goal of creating a, a more sustainable ecosystem. Uh, I don't think there's anything to say we can't introduce some engineering to, uh, to remediate what was done over. Hundred, hundred fifty years, uh, you know, that, it's not a pristine ecosystem. Uh, restoring it's not going to be, um, you know, i- it's not going to be completely. Natural, it's going to be an engineered solution. That's, that's exactly right. That's, that's the point. We, we're not, we're not suggesting that. I mean, the, the one requirement of this grant is for the, is for the ecosystem to have. Uh, been destroyed by act of man, not by nature. But that doesn't mean that it has to be restored by undoing what was done by man. It would be restored through modern engineering in the context of what we're living in today. So for us to, we, we shouldn't presume that the only way to do this would be. To restore the original outflow, it would be for them to build another outflow as necessary to have the. To be able to restore the habitat in the pond. Um, while all this floodwater is being, uh, is being, um, pumped in that direction. That's what, that's what. The feasibility study would be to see if they can figure out how to do that. Cause we don't, we shouldn't, we, we're not, uh. Well, I'm not an environmental engineer, um, but, uh, there, the Army Corps is ma- is offering this. Is offering this, uh, uh, study to us. I think we should take advantage of it and see if it's possible. They may very well say that, uh, look with all that. If you're pumping that water in that direction, we can't help you. That, that would be an answer that would provide, that would be useful knowledge, um. Uh, it would mean that we can't be done and we should stop thinking about it, but, um. People are thinking about this. There, there is, uh, there is some significant, uh. Uh, thinking in town that it would be nice for Bear Pond to be restored, um, and let's let the Army Corps of Engineers. Engineers come and tell us if it can be done and if so, how to do it.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree. I think, you know, as Kristen pointed out, we should, um. You know, look at both programs. I think, you know, to your concern, Tony. If the habitat restoration, the answer is, well, we have to have an open creek. That crosses what, where Castle Road is, the answer is going to be, we're not going to do that because. Uh, and, and an open outfall becomes a gigantic infall when the storm comes. So. You know, that's not something we can pursue, but, um, you know, in eighteen hundred, eighteen fifty, nineteen hundred. When there was a creek there, there were no houses on Ward Road and Foxo Road and. It was essentially a beach. So, uh, that's not the case anymore. So we can't, we can't, you know, have a solution for Bear Pond that involves. Water ingress to that neighborhood. That's for, for certain.
Yeah, I, Pat and Dan's response there cleared up. You know, my, my confusion. I understand what they're saying there, um. So, I, you know, the other thing is, you know, we've been working on the, you know, we keep talking about the flood prevention side. Um, you know, and we haven't really, we've talked about it publicly, but not, you know, directly to the planning board. You know, do you want me to go through a little bit of, uh, what the efforts we've been making on our end in that regard to inform? You know, to, or do you want to say that for another time or?
Um, I. You guys can speak up if you want. I, I think we could say that for another time. Um, I, I think we, um. I'm not sure that. Well, I mean, we're, we're looking to rely on the Army Corps to, to understand all this stuff and figure it out. We're just asking the question. So I, I'm not sure. It would be all that productive for us to understand the details.
I think, you know, some of my confusion is, you know. I think it's all sourced with like, you know, just being able to communicate with each other, what, what direction we're each heading in, right? And, um, so that we're all working in the same, cause you know, maybe there is a solution there that accomplishes our goals and yours. Right? That's what you're saying is, you know, maybe there's a way to do both and we don't know.
And, right, exactly, exactly. And let the Army come and let the Army Corps come and tell us.
So let me just, um, let me just, I'll, I'll just share my screen. This is a, a, an older presentation that I provided to. Um. The Lowlands neighborhood. Um, the, the flood issue, the flood issues and, and keep in mind, you know, the flood issues are not isolated. In the Lowlands. Um, when we get hit with storms, we're dealing with issues on White Way, um. Uh, over in the Bird Sanctuary area of town, uh, you know. Uh, Bass Point Tri Mountain area, you know, there's a number of different areas. In town that, you know, deserve attention regarding flood issues. Um, but when, you know, more specifically to Lowlands. You know, what are the problems that we're trying to solve? So there's three different issues here. There's daily drainage that. Needs attention. There's flood prevention. And then there's flood recovery. How quickly can we recover from a flood after a major storm event? Um, some of the solutions are effective to all three of these problems. So there's an eighteen inch outfall pipe that exists, but currently does, is not open. It runs from Castle Road out to Doggy Beach, or that's the design of it. But through, through a process authorized in twenty eighteen of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we, um. Explored that pipe and discovered that it was dead end. Dead ended in the, uh, before the, the seawall and doesn't go out to Doggy Beach. Um, there's a roadway stormwater system, catch basins that collect water, um, both from like daily. Uh, you know, rainfall, um, but also when we have a flood system, a, a flood. You know, that seawater goes into this system as well. And we've explored the direction, you know, of those pipes. Um, where do they head? What's their condition? Um, we have more work to do in a hydrology sense, but. Uh, we've started looking at that too. And then again, the drainage ditch. So for, you know, a normal stormfall. Those, um, that stormwater system that exists under the roadways. That is designed to go out to Doggy Beach can't because that outfall pipe is closed. So the next outfall for it is into the ditch system. So, um. Any groundwater and stormwater roadway stormwater system, that water finds its way into the ditch. Which then flows to Bear Pond. Um, we, you know, ways to improve these items. We had. Hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in twenty eighteen. We got another hundred thousand last year. We applied for, um, this brick grant. We applied one was for a hydrology study and two, um. Actually goes into the next category of flood prevention. Um, and then using, utilizing mosquito control, which every town has, um. Funding that goes from the state through our budget into Essex County mosquito control. In the Essex County and then they distribute services to us and. One, one thing that they work on is alleviating stagnant water. So we brought them in, uh, and did a huge, uh. Job on in, at Kelly Greens, uh, restoring the flow of water in some of the ditch systems in that area. Um, the next one's flood prevention. How do we keep water out? Uh. Mostly we don't have flood issues when it comes to rainfall. Or melting snow. Our flood issues are when the, when the ocean, when the surge, you know, gets so strong and it comes over. And it fills up these areas. The two spots that are, um. Of concern are the Short Beach Dune and the Castle Road coastline. Short Beach Dune, we've, uh, we applied to that same brick grant to, um. Uh. For funding of like one point one or one point two million dollars to increase the height of this Short Beach Dune to prepare for. That sea level rise of fifty to a hundred years. Um, unfortunately, we were just told that, uh, we are going to be moved to the next grant hazard mitigation forty-four ninety-six. Uh, because our hazard mitigation plan is still under review at FEMA and it needs to be finalized in order to be eligible for that brick grant. So both of our applications that we originally filed the brick are now being submitted to the, uh, hazard mitigation grant, which has, um. A lot of funding and is specifically for Massachusetts. Uh, we utilize the MVP action grant to identify these concerns and to. Um, design the short beach job. Um, we are also submitted a statement of interest yesterday. Uh, sorry, my. Lights in my office keep going out. Uh, we submitted a statement of interest to MVP yesterday for the next action grant. To do a feasibility study for a, um. Revetment on the Castle Road coastline behind the private homes. So. As you're driving, uh. Away from the Coast Guard station, the last five houses on your right before you get to that little rocky beach. Are on stilts. Uh, every house before that has a seawall. So in these storm surge events, water comes rushing up their driveways, under their homes. Over Castle Road and down into Fox Hill Cap and Ward Road and into the pump station, uh, area. So we're looking to see if we could, um, get funding through MVP to do a feasibility study and, and then. About potentially building a revetment behind those homes. Um, so those two, those two projects would be incredible help. Towards preventing floods. Um, and there's other grants here, CZM Action Grant, Community Project Funding and FEMA, um. Funding that. Once we get through the feasibility, we would go and apply for, for actual design and permitting work. Um, Army Corps is enlisted on here, but as, as, uh, Kristen had mentioned, that is also a prod, uh, a, uh. An option for us to explore, uh, for that construction funding. And then lastly, flood recovery. So again, the drainage ditch helps us in that situation. Developing emergency access points for, um, portable pumps to pump water out, um. And, and actually purchasing those pumps. But we've bought two. Inch diesel portable pumps that can do like. I think it was like twenty-four hundred gallons per minute. Insane, insane, uh, pieces of machinery that we've already utilized since twenty eighteen. Um, and we've actually been able to, uh, re- deflood the entire golf course in less than a day. Um, they, it, those are great, uh. Pieces of equipment for us to help recover from floods. And then, uh, Dubai and King is the. Engineering firm that we've hired, well, that we have a scope, we're, we're working on edits to that scope. And a lot of what they're going to be doing is similar to what, uh. We've been talking about with, for Army Corps. They're coming in, we've asked them to look at the eighteen inch outfall pipes. Look at the stormwater, the roadway stormwater system. Look at the ditch system, Bear Pond, and look at the coastline. And basically, their. Their task is to, is to look at all of those things from a macro level. And basically is figure out the feasibility of each of those solutions. And value them and rank them, you know, how, what, what are you going to invest in first that's going to provide the most value? In these issues. Um, and they're looking at ecological habitat. They're looking at, um. They're looking at hydrology and everything that we've talked about tonight. So. Um, still a lot of work to do. Uh, we have mosquito control. It is hopefully coming in, um. You know, later this month, uh, to continue the work on, on vegetation removal in the ditch system to improve that flow. Um, and when we, uh, were considering another Warren article. Uh, at this year's town meeting to fund some of these efforts. Um, so, yeah, that's, that's a lot of, that's, that's, uh, that's actually a quick summary, cause. Now, if you go into each one of these, you, you can talk an hour for each one of them, but, um. That's how we're looking at this issue is how do we, you know, from a, from a, take a step back, look at it from the. From a macro level and then, and then at a micro level and, and, and how are we gonna? Best spend our money to make the best, you know, the best value solution in a, in that type of priority. Uh, so. I guess what I'll be adding to this flow chart is, you know, ecological restoration. And how does that layer in to all of these efforts?
Tony, do we have an engineering study ongoing right now?
Uh, Dubai and King is the engineering firm that has, you know, come out, looked at all of these issues. And they've put together a, a huge scope of work that we have some edits to, um. And once those are solved, then they'll, they'll get started.
Is that what we approved at town meeting?
Uh, the hundred thousand dollars at town meeting was for three different things. Ditch work, that engineering study and, um. Development of another emergency access basin in the area of the Lowlands parking lot. Um, we've prioritized the engineering study. Uh, we've got, you know, the original uh, scope sent to us. It's probably going to cost somewhere around forty grand. So we'll still have sixty thousand dollars there that we could. You know, either hold on to and put towards solutions that come from the result of that engineering study. Or we could use some of those funds towards like the, you know, some of those um. Uh, culvert issues I was talking about that would help improve flow in the dish system. We know there are flow issues that can be improved. That's gonna be a result of the engineering study, so. Starting, we could get started on that. We don't have to wait to the end of that study to be completed.
Yeah, that would be good.
I think I just wanted to add as a, I thought that was an excellent proposal that firm submitted, so. Looking forward to getting that going.
Uh, thank you for that, uh, Tony, for that presentation. I think that's, I think that's helpful and, and uh, we certainly appreciate how much, how much work. Uh, uh, you and, and Zach and uh, everybody else is doing on, on this and, and we're not uh, not seeking to get in the way. Uh, and not seeking to uh, assert ourselves over the whole project. There's just a little piece in here that we think could fit in and. Um, a feasibility studying for no town money. Um, it could be useful to see uh, what, uh, what. Can be done within the scope of everything else that we have to do. Um, Shannon, uh, you have your hand up. Do you want to say something?
Um, uh, thank you, uh, Dan and uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator. Uh, this has been a, a really long process to get this meeting together. Um, and I'm really glad that we're here. Um, I had a couple of questions, Josh, uh, Mr. Chairman. That um, just like kind of devil's advocate kind of questions and it would help me understand. The, the, the approach that the town is taking currently. Um. It, it, um, you say that the, that the flow goes to Bear Pond. Um, and in, in the historical record, we also know that it went the other way. Um, in eighteen forty, the town filled in the estuary at Doggy Beach. Around eighteen fifty, Frederick Tudor sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen asking them to reopen. That area and because people were uh, getting, getting wet. And so he built the bridge and he, he donated his own time and money to build a bridge. Uh, there's a long wooden rush bridge that went from just around twenty-nine Castle over to Nahat Road. Um, and then in nineteen nineteen, they've uh, the Coast Guard. As they were building the Coast Guard Station, they, they needed a parking lot. And so they filled it in again. Um, and their parking lot is what's now Veterans Memorial.
Oops, Shannon.
Shannon, you're muted.
Dean, on Doggy Beach one day, he was telling me that there used to be a pipe that went from. Like right at the road, uh, like the, the entrance to the Short Beach parking lot. Um, that, that's the end of the ditch system, but he remembers that that used to continue. Right in front of the, the pharmacy store and over to Doggy Beach. And it seems like, I, that was like new news to me. And I was really glad that we were able to take that walk. And I mean, you know, Gene's been here forever and, and he, he knows that, you know, he, it was his own memory. And he remembers going down there and seeing the, the water coming out of, of the system. So my question, just to the devil's advocate's uh, perspective, Josh is. From nineteen nineteen until now, what has the town done physically? From an engineering standpoint to reverse the flow? Did they bring in stones and dirt and fill it in and change the elevation so that it would flow to Bear Pond? Or did they, like, has it, I, in, in, in essence, what I'm asking is, is it wishful thinking? To think, to state that it flows to Bear Pond, or do we know that for sure? And that's, that, that my perspective is, that's the whole point that, that the planning board really talked and discussed. And that's why we're reaching out to you, because we don't know the answer to that. We, you know, it doesn't matter what we might think individually. But having the, the Army Corps kind of come in and tell us the real truth would, would be really helpful. So I'm just curious, has there been anything to, that the town's done to change the flow or, or not?
Well, you know. First of all, um. I, I don't have all the historical references that you do, but um. And I didn't say that it flows from Bear Pond to um, Doggy Beach or, or vice versa. Because sometimes it flows one way and sometimes it flows the other way. In other words, if you have a storm and your pumps aren't running. And the storm is such that all the water is coming over Willow Road and none is coming over at Short Beach. It's going to flow to that, in that direction because of gravity. It, it doesn't matter what we dug or what we didn't dig. Um, conversely, if you have a storm where there's more water uh, in, in the Ward Road area than there is at Bear Pond. It's going to flow towards Bear Pond. It's, it's just gravity. But I, what I will say is the system that's in place now is designed to, to flow towards Bear Pond. So if you look at the ditch system, it's like a root structure with the trunk being Bear Pond. And then the pumps, permanent pumps are, and the, and the gravity drain are in Bear Pond. So the system is designed uh, to drain to Bear Pond. And, you know, from, from the Ward Road area, yes, but also from all the way over to uh, from Pond Street and White Way. Um, you know, that, the whole, that whole base, it's a huge base. And it's designed to all drain towards Bear Pond and uh, most of the time it works that way. Uh, maybe not as well as it should, but that, that's the intent of the arrangement, the ditch arrangement now and the placement of the pumps now.
And if I can add to that, in uh, you know, about ten years ago, uh, the town hired a firm, Sumco. To actually come in and improve that flow. Um, and they did a ton of dredging in the ditch system and in Bear Pond and the other supplementary ponds in, in the golf course. And we know it flows out. So only thing I would say is it, it flows and it fills. As you mentioned, Josh, the last storm we got, not, not this past weekend, but the storm before. We had a lot of water that came in across from the golf course and filled up the pond. So as that lowest part of the system fills. Water seems to be flowing towards Lowlands, but it's filling from the bottom up. But when you have water coming in, uh, if you, we had a water break on Fox Hill Road in twenty nineteen. Thousand, hundreds of thousands of gallons of water flowed right into that ditch system. It did not go left and fill up and pour out over by the entrance to the parking lot. It went into the ditch system and went towards the golf course. If you look, if you go and walk the ditch system, you can actually see in certain parts where it's flowing and where it isn't. There are parts that are stagnant, like I said, because those culverts have lifted over time. They're, they're actually like corrugated pipes. Um, that have actually risen over time. Um, and then lastly, I mean, if you look at, i- this is a. This isn't anything to be proud of, but this, there are softballs in the ditch system in Kelly Greens. Those are coming from the softball field. So the water flows in that direction. And when it's, when that, when that ditch system is full, it's flowing very quickly. But when it's, when it isn't, it looks stagnant. In some spots it is because, you know, if you walk um, from Ward Road. Behind the um, electric substation to basically where the entrance from. The uh, compost site hits Heritage Trail, that area is very, very congested. That's the next big part that we want mosquito control to work on. So that part looks very stagnant. Um, if you were to walk, if you're on Flash Road and you walked um, into the side yard. Not across, uh, uh, across from Kelly Greens, you'll see the water flowing underneath Flash Road towards Kelly Greens. So the, the, honestly, from the, based on the plans. It's about, it's about six to seven feet of a draw. Four to five feet of that is Bear Pond. So from, from Bear Pond all the way to the parking lot, you're talking about, you know. Over a thousand feet, only dropping like, currently, it's only dropping like two or three feet. It's not much. So it is, it does go in that direction, but it's not a huge decline. So.
It's just not a lot ahead there, you know.
There's not a lot ahead and.
With speed bumps in the way.
Yeah, the lowest part in the hand is the, the bottom of Bear Pond. Uh, that's the lowest elevation. Um, and as, as Josh, as the chairman had said, that you have to understand that. This drainage area occupies about three quart, it's, it, it accommodates about three quarters of the town. Of, of li- of Big Nahat. It's not just the Lowlands area. It's not just Fox Hill and Castle Road. It's Spring Road, it's White Way, it's Willow Road, it's Castle Road. Uh, by the um, Coast Guard housing and down that area in Johnson School. It includes, this drainage area accommodates all of those areas. And the lowest point is Bear Pond. And we know that because we've had propperty done. Um, this shows the elevations. The two ma- uh, Shannon, that through address your question, um, the two man-made structures that probably be. Really accelerated that flow was the thirty-six inch drainage outlet in Bear Pond to Dorothy Beach. And the eighteen inch outlet that goes to the, you know, the clapper valve out to Dorothy Beach. Underground. When they were, uh, I'm not quite sure when they were put in, that probably in the forties. Uh, around those nineteen forties or somewhere, you might know better than I, Shannon, but when they put those drainage systems in. It accelerated the reverse of that drainage system.
You're a hundred percent correct.
Yeah, but eh, can I just ask a question though? Isn't, isn't it the pumps that keep Bear Pond water level low?
No, there's a sluice gate on the thirty-six inch uh, drainage um, gravity drainage pipe. That can be adjusted. So if you try to keep that low now, the problem with the thirty-six inch diameter drainage pipe. It's only going to work half the time because it's closed at high tide. Right? And the same as the um, the duckbills in the um, and, and the other structure that's there, the eighteen inch one. Um, high tide, they ain't draining. Um, so um, there's a sluice gate there. I think the town keeps that sluice gate halfway open. Um, so that they can try to maintain a certain elevation in Bear Pond. Because as Josh said, once that elevation Bear Pond comes up, want to become stagnant in the ditches. Because there's not much of elevation change between Lowlands and Bear Pond.
That's really good information and thank you, Mark and, and, and thank you, Tony. Um. Josh, I had one more comment if I can and then I'll, I'll move on. Um. There was some concern expressed um, a- along the way, a- as we were talking about this and at, at, at the board level. Um, about the thirty-five percent cost sharing plan. And I think that, you know, a lot of people. You know, in town, if they hear that, they're going to think, oh goodness, you know, we're signing up for, you know, more debt. And, and possibly more expenditures of, of money that we don't have because we're already, you know, struggling to some degree. Um, I wanted to mention to you that I've had conversations with the Army Corps of Engineers. Um, as well, in the New England office. Um, and um, spoke to Chris Hatfield who is over there. Um, so. He was telling me about the Massachusetts Department of Ecological Restoration, which I didn't even know existed. Um, and so they're a state level group and they basically do similar things. Um, and he says that they've worked in tandem together. And so I wanted to offer that to you as well, that, and on the thirty-five percent cost sharing side. There may be other grants, um, Department of Fish and Wildlife. Uh, Mass Department of Ecological Restoration. Uh, the culvert replacement program, uh, the culvert replacement grant program that Massachusetts has as well. That could seriously lower that thirty-five percent. And that's, you know, I, I feel really confident that. With the right team on this, that we could do some cost sharing and bring this project down to. Possibly near zero or net zero. That's, that's at least in my mind is a dream. That's kind of how I, I envision it.
Yeah, well, that's.
Stop, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
I was just gonna say, you know, that's, it's good info. I mean, getting to the point of the cost share is still, you know, there's a few hurdles.
It's a long way away.
We get there, but uh, yeah, but that's, I appreciate the uh, research.
And the other thing uh, to keep in mind, Shannon, is, you know, one, one challenge that we always fall into. Is um, your, the source of these fundings sometime trigger extended permitting procedures. Sometimes these state grants, you know, um. They might help you on the financial end, but then it extends your timeframe because you trigger MIPA. Um, so like that's some of the issue, th- that's always a constant. You know, battle of, do we want to, you know, are we trying to get this done quickly or are we trying to, you know, do this cheaper? Um, so that's just something you, it's an added layer of complexity we think about when we're going for these grants and stuff.
I, you know, with, when Kristen was saying that this would take, you know, possibly three years to just get through some of that stuff. That's, to me, I, I was thinking more like four or five. This is a very long range project that, you know, that. That we all need to be working on together. Um, the Selectman, the Conservation Commission. You know, a- any other groups in town, the Open Space Committee, the Planning Board, you know, we've. The, the more people that are involved in this and the more minds that kind of come together. And, you know, we could all put our differences aside and work towards this. Well, it's gonna, it's gonna be wonderful. And we could fix a large, you know, problem that's existed for almost two hundred years. And I think that that's a, a, a great challenge for our community. Um, we all need something like that to work together on. Right now, because, you know, we've had a lot of division for the last few years. And I think it's really important that we uh. That we do that. I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, thank you again. This is um, this has been a long time coming.
Yeah, good. Well, collaboration is good. So, thanks. Um, so we had this on the agenda as um, a discussion. Um. So I don't know if we can vote or should vote, but um. I would be in favor of submitting uh, letters for both of those grant opportunities and seeing what we can learn.
If you want, I, I can work on drafting letters. And then we could vote on them at the next meeting and make sure they're on the agenda and not worry about a violation.
Yeah.
Good idea, yeah.
Sounds good and.
Hey, Josh, Josh.
Yeah, yes, he.
Just like, I'd just like to say thanks to Mark and Pat Riley for pulling this together. This has been very helpful.
Yeah. Sounds interesting. We could use any help we can get, especially the free help. Um, all right, anybody else have any input on this topic before we move on?
Uh, all right. Thanks, Kristen, for uh, joining us tonight.
Yeah, that was very helpful.
My pleasure.
Josh, if you're ready to move on, then I think we could close our meeting.
All right, um, I think we're ready.
Do that. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting?
So move.
That was Cal. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Sheila. Uh let us vote, Cal.
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Shannon. Uh Steve, if he's here. Rob, if he's here.
He's muted, Shannon.
I thought I heard him.
He says we're voting.
I think he said yes.
He said yes.
I said yes.
Yes, I thought I heard him say yes. Uh and I vote yes. Um we are adjourned uh at eight P M. Thank you, thank you to the Board of Selectmen and everybody else.
Thanks for joining us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, um so the next item on the agenda is preserving East Point. Uh we got an excellent. Uh legal summary from K P Law. Counsel Jeff Blake at the last meeting. I don't have anything new uh to report. Uh Gene or Mark or Tony, do you have anything new or anything you wanted to comment on?
No, I have not.
All right. And that means um town administrator report. We have for us, Tony.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first storm recap, uh we, you know, obviously got a lot of snow, a lot of wind. Um we did, we were very lucky and dodged a huge bullet when it comes to coastal flooding. Um the way that this storm came in, uh the wind direction was opposite of the surge direction. And the most intense portion of that storm came at low tide. Uh so we were very, very lucky in that regards, but we were fully prepared. Uh Zach and his team and E M D. Um they, they put up a ton of um, you know, storm surge barriers, they preset pumps. In on Castle Road uh on Willow Road and had another pump and generators ready to go. Uh E M D worked with the school uh to have our shelter. Um ready to go if we needed it at the school. We had National Guard and National Grid. Uh stationed in town in case the causeway flooded. Um, there was a, a tremendous amount of prep that went into the storm and then, you know, the. The storm itself was. Was, you know, whiteout conditions, you know, speaking with Zach. Um they would, you know, they would plow the hot road and they'd come back, you know, on the second trip and there'd already be. Like, you know, six inch snowdrifts, like they were never there. So at one point, you know, the storm was so intense that we could not keep up with it, but. You know, our guys kept at it, kept working and um I can say that, you know, we've, I've, I've heard nothing but compliments, um you know, externally and internally. You know, from, you know, the, the cooperation with our team, everybody working together, working to help each other out for a common effort and. You know, I think that pride, um you know, shows in the result of how we were, you know, how we handled the storm. So I just wanted to thank them publicly. Uh you know, school, D P W, E M D, police, fire and everyone else that, that stepped up and. And did a good job. And like I said, they continue the snow removal operations continue while beyond the storm. Um Sunday, they worked. Uh very hard to clean up the school and have it ready for Monday. On Monday, they continued doing sidewalk removal and then tonight, uh they're gonna be doing a, a good amount of removal on the hot road. Um, so we have some. We have some storm coming in on Friday, looks like sleet, uh maybe some snow, uh but we wanna. We wanna like, you know, move that where there's a lot of snow, especially in certain areas of town, we wanna try to. Make room um just in case. Um, so. Uh that's my recap with the storm. Oh, and then with the FEMA. And M I M A have reached out that they might declare it as a uh, an emergency. That storm, so we are cataloging, you know, all of our hours, payroll, any damages um to equipment or property. We are in the process of catalog, cataloging that and submitting it to FEMA um for potential reimbursement. Um as far as damage, we really didn't have much coastal damage, thankfully. Uh we did have some equipment um go down. Unfortunately, uh the fire department experienced some uh roof damage and leak uh leaks into the building which are being assessed. But, you know, from, aside from that, you know, we fared pretty well. Um. C P C, I wanted to give an update. Uh we, we submitted a number of applications to the Community Preservation Committee. And I wanted to just briefly go through those. Um, the first one is a. An application regarding nine Little Nahat Road. Uh this property is uh of the Howe Estate. It's a historic building eligible for uh the National Registrar. It was, you know, one of the only homes on uh Little Nahat. Um since the eighteen hundreds, the Howe Estate, you know, owned pretty much all of Little Nahat until later being subdivided. Uh. If you're driving out of town and Short Beach is on your right, this is the white Victorian with the tall tower that you would see as you look up towards Little Nahat. So it's a, go ahead, Gene.
No, I stayed, oh yeah, yeah. Very, very visible.
Um, so it's, it's uh in foreclosure, it's, there's a reverse mortgage on it. Uh it's the reverse mortgage is controlled by HUD. Which is a federal program, we are actively engaging them to uh try to kind of step in front of the auction process. Not sure if we're gonna be able to. Um, but if we are uh able to, we submitted an application to C P C to. Attempt to purchase the property, you know, either for historic preservation, open space and recreation, or even housing. Um. Development. Uh there really isn't any open, there is no open space in Little Nahat except for the small playground down at Short Beach, so. Um certainly a property worthy of saving. And uh we're gonna try to make that effort. So that's our first one. Um the second one, as we've talked about in the past, is funding for a housing production plan. Um. Pretty self-explanatory. Uh we are, you know, that would be to hire a consultant to help us. Uh assess our status in regards to forty B. Um thresholds of affordable housing in our town and develop a product, a plan to. Uh set and achieve certain goals to meeting that, those thresholds. Uh and the needs of our community. We also submitted an application for. Um. Audio visual A D A improvements to the main hall in the town hall. So as everyone has experienced, the, you know, the, the audio in the main hall is horrendous. And the lighting isn't that great either, and it's not historically accurate. Uh so this, we brought in two different consultants to assess. Um. The sound quality and the lighting quality and they made recommendations to improve those and gave us quotes. Uh so that features, you know. A stage curtain, curtains for the windows, soft sound um panels. Uh improved speaker system and lighting that has up, down light, up and down lighting. Um that is more. Uh. Similar to the original historical light structures, uh fixtures that were in the main hall. Um the next one was.
Oh, Tony, um quick question on the uh. On the um, on the stage, is the uh stage curtain, the old one, it's not still there, is it?
No.
Now, I think I took it out because I, I remember it had espresso center or something. Yeah, okay. I, I, whether I, I had removed that or not, if I didn't, uh. I, I just wanna let you know, but I guess.
I know somebody removed it.
I think I, I got that.
Uh but yeah, uh the original track system is still there, actually. We would need a new, a new track system, which is included in this quote, but we talked about, we talked about saving. The old track system.
That's great.
Uh to use for like a soft curtain material that would be, go along the back wall of the stage. So when the curtains are open, you still have that soft material absorbing sound instead of echoing it back.
That'd be great.
And matching curtains for the windows uh would, would also help with that and improve the, you know, the look of the room. Um, the next one is, uh last year, there was a borrowing article for. Um. Envelope improvements out, you know, exterior improvements to the town hall, the library. And um the cemetery wall. Uh. We've completed a bid process and of course, you know, the bids that we received exceed, you know, the funding that we were approved. Uh at last town meeting, so this application is the same application as last year. To make up for the difference that we don't currently have. Um, we, we also put an application in uh for playground equipment, a general hundred thousand dollars, yep.
Um before we leave the cemetery, so you put an application for the wall?
It's, well, just the arch.
Yeah, just the.
Wall, the assessment for the wall to repair the entire wall is, you know, that assessment came back to about like seven hundred thousand, really expensive. But the arch was about a hundred thousand. And that is of the most concern, obviously, that's the way you get in and out, we don't want it to fall on anybody.
Yeah, one thing I would consider in the future, perhaps, uh but I think it's beyond the scope of the D P W. Um but in the, in the front part of the cemetery, where all the flat stones are. To get a contractor in there to raise all of those flat stones and put them on the same level.
I, we're looking into that, to including that into the uh town budget. Uh I had asked. Uh Lynn Spencer if that was an eligible project and it didn't. I don't think it would have met the criteria for C P C, but it's definitely something we're looking into doing.
Yeah, it'd be great to do.
That and uh. Completing the circle, the cobblestones in the circle in the back. Of the driveway. Um. So playground equipment, uh when the Open Space Committee put out their survey, a lot of the responses that came back were. Um. You know, need for new playground equipment or equipment that would be for age groups that are currently missing. Um benches, picnic tables, shade structures. You know, things of that nature. Playground equipment is extremely expensive. Um. So we put in for a hundred thousand dollars and if approved, we would work with the Open Space Committee or the Recreation Committee uh to. Uh allocate or uh. Uh, you know, distribute that funding to the existing playgrounds that we have. Excuse me. Uh next was a Bailey's Hill Restoration Project, so similar to last year, there was uh, or two years ago, there was a thirty thousand dollar grant through C P C to do a. Uh restoration on the east slope of Tri Mountain, which is currently underway. This is a similar idea, but on Bailey's Hill proper, so behind the gazebo. Um. And we put in for fifty thousand dollars, it would be to try to, you know, um. Remove invasive species, plant native species and improve the overall um. You know, landscape of that property. Sorry, so we got new L E D lights in the town hall. And they're motion censored. And so if I don't move enough, the lights in my office turn off, so that's what I'm doing. Uh this entire meeting is standing up to get my office lights to turn back on. There is a fix for it, I just haven't.
Well, sit very still, you're saving the planet every time the lights glow.
Yeah. Uh, um. No good deed, you know, goes unpunished. Uh, the next one is um Lodge Park, uh this was, we co-sponsored this with SWIM, this is for a uh, a um. A master, a master plan specific for Lodge Park uh for the maintenance and future use. Um. I forget what the dollar amount was for that. And then the next one was restoration of the flagpole in front of the town hall. And then we co-sponsored a, a uh application with the Johnson School for Heritage Trail Improvements. Accessibility and signage. Uh. Those are, those are all the C P C applications.
Well, those, those all sound nice to me, Tony. Um. As you know, uh I'm pretty passionate about the open space here in the hot, um. Such limited open space and it's important that we. Take really good care of it, so super excited for the Bailey's Hill project, I hope that goes through as well as the Heritage Trail enhancements. Um. And the, and the Lodge Park managed plan, so. Um I know, I know Gene and Mark also feel very passionately about uh preserving it and taking care of our open spaces, so um. I'm excited for those applications in particular.
Yeah.
Uh so, you know, the only other update I give is, I wanna give you guys is that we are, you know, working every day to go through the budget development process. Uh we've, you know, we've met with all of the department heads uh once already, Allison and I are going through all of their requests. Free cash was certified the other day. Um we're looking at, you know, not only operating. Uh. Operating funds, but you know, the omnibus budget, but also capital needs. Um layering that in with ARPA funds. The uh COVID Recovery Act funds. Um. And. And looking at, you know, our future, future borrowings and capital plan, so a lot going on uh in that regard too and. You know, hopefully uh by the next Board of Selectment meeting, I'll have a uh, a little bit more to present to you on that. Um and you know, if, I, I do wanna sit down with each of you. Uh individually to go through kind of that process as well, so I'll, I'll reach out to each of you uh to sit down and spend some time on that. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thanks, Tony. Um next item on the agenda is Citizens Forum, so if there's anybody on the Zoom call that um has a question or a comment, you can. Unmute yourself and uh give your name and address, or you can also utilize the chat that's available on the Zoom call to do the same. I don't see anyone unmuting themselves. And uh Tony, is there anyone in the chat? I think you're the only one that sees that.
Uh nope.
All right, well with that, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Uh roll call vote.
Gene can't be eye.
All right. Josh, Andrew, am I? Thank you all very much. Thanks to um planning board for joining us. And uh Kristen Kent, Chair of the ConCon. And good. Night all.
Hi.
Good night.